On Tuesday, January twenty first, twenty twenty, at seven P M., City Hall Building, nine fifteen South Toverville Road, Bisbee, Arizona. Ms. Coronado, would you call the rule, please?
Mayor Pro Tem Louis Pollock.
Here.
Councilmember Joni Giacamino.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Higgins.
Here.
Mayor David M. Smith.
Under.
Councilmember Leslie Johns is excused. Councilmember Joan Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Anna Klein.
Here.
City staff Teresa Coleman, city manager, Ashley Coronado, city clerk, Carrie Bagley, finance director, Jesus Haro, public works director, Alberti Chave, police chief, James Ledbetter, city attorney.
I thought it was because I had intervention for a second, which was appropriate because it was a moment of silence. So for a moment of silence, I'd simply like us to think right now of those less fortunate than we are, we're very fortunate to be living where we are as we are. And so if we could take a moment and think of those less fortunate. Stand and join me in the platting, please.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under one, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chief of that door keeps up, there may be some violence. And there are some. I had we've come up here if you would, sir, where you are and give us your wisdom here.
So I just want to take this quick opportunity. Unfortunately, the other guys are on a call, but we do have some new officers. Some have been a little newer than others. If I could have them step up real quick. Officer Loswenna, Officer Cox, also we have Officer Carbohall and Officer Brennan. Officer Cox and Officer Carbohall just completed their field training about two, three months ago. October. And Officer Loswenna and Officer Brennan are in their field training right now. What we want to know is where are you going to be? So we're pressing right along. We have two more candidates back in the cabin right now as we speak. So I want to take this opportunity to introduce them to mayor and council. My apologies for the others who aren't here. Like I said, they're handling calls for service. We also have a new dispatcher Denise Bernal. She's been on us for a couple of months now and working out quite nicely. Hopefully, she will continue to stay with us and we'll keep. We have a good group of people right now and we hope to keep her warm. So thank you.
Well, thank you. Guys, welcome.
Thanks, sir.
And you're being with us. As far as what I've been up to since our last meeting on the tenth, I went to the youth council formation meeting run by our War Two representative here, who's the liaison to the youth council.
Couldn't remember my name?
Joan Hanson.
Thank you.
And that's with an E. And I wanted to thank Joan Hanson for the opportunity of being there and also for doing it. I do appreciate that. And we had some people, guys there and some signed up and it's going to be, it's going to be fun. On the eleventh, I went to the senior center and yes, I did have breakfast, but I also sit there and it's a lot of fun because I get to talk to some of the, get to go and call people seniors. Anyway, get to go and sit down and talk to my peers and understand what's going on, what their needs are and so forth. For anybody that hasn't been there, you know, it's a great breakfast once a month and it's just a great organization. I like to pop in there during the week once in a while and just see the stuff going on and the bridge games and I think there's a poker back in the back room. And so it's a lot of fun. So it's something I really, really suggest you avail yourself of. You don't have to be a senior to have breakfast there. And I always think about you, you guys in blue, it's like eight bucks all you can eat. So yeah, biscuits and gravy and stuff like that, yeah, cop food, you know. On the thirteenth, I met with my, with the city manager for our every two week meeting. On the fifteenth, I attended the Appeal Board for Property Maintenance Code group. This is a, one of our committees that is typically inactive, but we have reasons for it to become active. And so it's being put together and the managing partner, Mr. Ledbetter's firm, provided a really good primer on open meeting lava. So it was quite, quite interesting. On the fifteenth, I also attended the neighborhood watch meeting in Saginaw. They've got a really good group there. Typically about twenty-five, thirty people. At this time, they had, they heard I was coming, there was only like twenty, but nevertheless was really good. On the sixteenth, Ms. Coleman and I attended the mayor managers meeting in Benson. And on the seventeenth, we both met with the representative of USDA and spoke with USDA regarding financial, potential financial matters. And on the twentieth, I, which is today, there was a legislative update through the legal cities and towns. And I attended the Cochise Addiction Recovery Partnership in Benson. And I did want to bring up on the twenty-fourth, it's this Friday, I will be having the mayors of Cananea and Naco Sonora, as well as their fire chiefs. And in Cananea, the civil defense director also will be coming. And we will be presenting them with our fire department, of course, in attendance. We'll be presenting them our replaced Scott Air Packs, our SCBA units. And so we'll be able to provide that to Cananea and to Naco Fire and provide them some additional safety that they don't have at this particular time. And so there will be press from Emerson and Cananea, as well as here. So anybody's welcome to come by if that's anything you want. And announcements, I'm pulling item number four and item number two C, as in Charles. With that, I have called to the public and Kathy Otis. Welcome,女士.
Silence isn't sexy and it's not cute, but without it, we'd be in a lot of trouble. When I say we need to think of the future, reduce emissions and grow our own food, you're probably thinking, oh, she's one of those. I may be one of those, but I have a point and it's important to each and every one of us. The future may not mean a heck of a lot to retired people. We just want to enjoy life as comfortably as possible, but we can't be so nonchalant about the future when you consider the person's twilight years are typically spent in a skilled nursing facility or under the care of a domestic worker. Who do you think will hold those caregiver jobs? It's going to be that percentage of the population that is now under eighteen, which according to the last census is twenty-one, twenty-six percent, a quarter of which are living below the poverty line. Think of their parents that have to work their tails off to provide for them, not leaving much time to be parents that raise healthy, well-adjusted children with the empathy it takes to be a caregiver. In traditional Native American societies and other cultures, elders always have a purpose because they educate and care for the children, teaching them basic survival skills. I consider myself a farmer first and educator second because it's my goal to educate as many people as possible about the benefits of sustainable backyard farming. I can talk about how sustainable farming gives seniors and disabled a way to remain healthy, financially stable and independent. That isn't all that important to those of you who aren't living on a fixed income, but once a person becomes ill, impoverished, or unable to care for themselves, it affects the entire community. No one wants to be a drain on society, but sometimes it's unavoidable. We must find a way to provide food security for these vulnerable groups. What better way than to allow them to raise livestock? You can raise vegetables without animals, but for a disabled person, it makes it a lot easier when chickens and ducks do the weeding, tilling and pest control, providing fertilizer in the process. Growing children and seniors need protein to stay healthy. You can't grow enough soybeans in a typical Bisbee yard to take care of that, but with poultry and livestock, you can. And let's not forget about vegans. They can help livestock animals that already exist by allowing them to graze in their yards. That way, you won't have to spend so much time weeding out invasive plants like wild mustard. It really does take a village because when you neglect one part of the community, everyone suffers. Homesteading, backyard farming, or sustainable agriculture is so important. It's not just that we want pure, healthy and nutritious food to eat. We need to be able to spend more time with our children and grandchildren. Working two or three jobs with only an hour or two to spare each day is not going to cut it. As the old Jackson Brown song goes, get up and do it again.
Thank you, ma'am.
It's a struggle for the legal tender.
Accounts payable.
I move that we pay accounts payable in an amount of one hundred and eighty-one thousand, five dollars and twenty-two cents.
Do we have a second?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second, we have questions.
On page three, I'm just curious, it's under police department, what got towed?
I'm not sure.
There's like one, two, three, four, five, six barnets. It just says description towing S C R Vista Bisbee Police Department, I'm assuming with the acronyms.
So we tow vehicles on a regular basis. Barnets usually bills us once a month. And then for those vehicles, I'm assuming that's what this is referenced to, for those vehicles, when the order comes to reclaim those vehicles, we charge them the price that barnets charged us on top of the storage fee and the administrative fee. So that's typically what that would be.
Which it looks like ninety-five bucks a ton, so that sounds about right. Okay, thanks. On page eight, under airport fund, what would cause the airport to have a three hundred and fifteen dollar electric bill? That does seem like it's happened every time. Has something happened at the airport that there would be that high with bill? Sorry, I just.
The only thing we can think of is maybe the heat.
Oh, it's not gas out there, is it? Okay.
Good enough? I have a question. Yes. Page one, ten thirty-four, four hundred and sixty-six, ambulance home retainment. What does that mean? As it, okay, I'll let you. Finance director, yeah.
Usually if somebody comes in and pays in part of their ambulance fee and then the insurance company covers it, we have to refund or pay that.
Okay. Thank you. You won't see that too often. Hearing nothing further, those in favor of paying the accounts payment, signify by stating aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Consent agenda, items A through P. A, approval of the minutes of the regular session of mayor and council held on December seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, at seven P M. B, approval of the minutes of the regular session of mayor and council had on January seventh, twenty twenty, at seven P M. D, approval of the appointment of Yvette Ponte to the design review board. E, approval of the appointment of Brian Hope to the appeals board to the property maintenance code. F, approval of the appointment of McKinley Green to the youth council. G, approval of the appointment of Reese Chave to the youth council. H, appointment of the, approval of the appointment of Ashley Chave to the youth council. I, approval of the appointment of Sandy Hausman to the planning and zoning commission. J, approval of the reappointment of Peter Gapper to the design review board. K, approval of the reappointment of Peter Gapper to the community sustainability commission. L, approval of the reappointment of Peter Van Gudelak to the board of adjustment. M, approval of the reappointment of Frank Cabayo to the streets and infrastructure committee. N, approval of the reappointment of Charlene Snooty Borwick to the Evergreen Cemetery Committee. O, approval of the park facility right of a use permit for the use of City Park and Brew Gulch for the Blues and Bisbee Music Festival, to be held on Saturday, September nineteenth, twenty twenty, from seven A M. to ten P M. This includes setup and breakdown. P, approval of a special event liquor license application submitted by Friends of the Bisbee Warren Ball Park for an event to be held at the Warren Ball Park located at three hundred Ruby Avenue, Bisbee, on Saturday, April fourth, twenty twenty, from eight A M. to eight P M. And on Sunday, April five, twenty twenty, from nine A M. to eight P M. Catherine Wright applicant. Council, does anybody need any of these closed for further discussion? All. You want all closed, please? Okay. All is closed, any others? If not, entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the consent agenda items A and B, D through N, and P.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second for the discussion. All right. Ms. Coronado?
Mayor Pro Tem Pollock.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number O, Mr. Higgins.
Is there anybody here from the Easter sales foundation that, I had a couple of questions. To my knowledge, this is the first time that anybody's asked to close Brew Avenue for the Blues and Bisbee Festival. And the closing of the street and routing traffic up OK Street, which is precarious as it is, and this will put a lot of pressure on OK Street and then coming back. Done?
I'm sorry, yes.
And coming back and going around Taylor to get out of the gulch. Taylor is another really precarious street. It's a two-way street and it really shouldn't be. You know, it's, there's not enough traffic down here for one car, actually, but that's going to create problems for the residents that live up in the gulch. And also there's a business up in the gulch and that'll just kill them for the day. So I, you know, I'm all for the Blues Festival itself and I was wondering, could you do this without closing Brew Avenue?
Hi, first of all, my name's Benette Mather and I'm the events manager for Easter Sales Blake Foundation and thank you for hearing me today. I did come to the city a week ago with my meeting and in anticipation of a different route and not closing the gulch completely. And then in a discussion with the members of the city that were in attendance with that meeting, the majority wanted the street closed because of the congestion and the issues that we faced last year. And everybody at the table ultimately agreed that having people go up OK and then when coming down to turn and go up and around Taylor made more sense than perhaps closing the street and saying locals only. And last year, I think what happened, ultimately happened, was between the off-duty officers that we had and the rangers that we had hired to help us with traffic, we were still backed up, completely going up and out of the gulch, well, coming into and going out of the gulch with people assuming that they may find parking in the gulch. And so we thought this year we would come to the table and suggest putting a sign up saying local traffic only. And then it was counter proposed to me that we redirect traffic and close the gulch for the safety of everybody. So I'm open to that discussion. And I guess at this point, perhaps the question would be better for not only myself, but maybe the other two people that were at the table that I, that we were having that discussion and came to that conclusion, excuse me, and came to that conclusion.
Was Chief Chapa at the meeting?
Yes.
Chief, is there, let me just ask, if the chief can add anything to clarify that?
No, that's pretty much it in a nutshell. This is a challenge, having an event this big on the gulch. It is every year. The concern was brought up to limit to local traffic only. Again, it's a challenge for us to regulate local traffic only, who can come up and who can't. And then on top of that, regulating for somebody that just wants to go to Mimosa Market, for example, is, you know, there were some challenges that were brought up. In staffing that with fire chief and public works, we discussed that and we came up with this alternative idea, if you will. There's been several who have tried this in the past or proposed it. It's never gotten past our initial meeting in the past and we figured we would put that forward and see if you guys were willing to entertain that or not. We can, by all means, I think they're willing to attempt to do it the same way as last time. But as I said, even on the Fourth of July, we spent half more time chasing down cars, trying to get out of the gulch in that direction. And having those, that traffic on that area becomes a challenge either way you look at it. So again, I think anytime we have that many people on the gulch is going to be a challenge no matter what direction the traffic goes.
Last year, did it go downward?
So we had, just like a typical Fourth of July, if I remember correctly, we allowed traffic to come up behind the stock exchange up the gulch. Traffic wasn't allowed to come down and traffic had to go up and around Taylor Avenue. Like I said, typical for Fourth of July. Never fails, we have people who try to get a parking spot, they'll park in places that make things a challenge. They will really overload that lower end where they can park and that makes it even a more challenging situation to get a fire truck or an emergency vehicle up through there with all that congestion. The thought was if we limited those cars there, they would still be set up in a manner that would provide them to quickly clear the street if a fire truck or an ambulance had your spot up there, they wouldn't have to go up and over OK Street. But again, this is something new. It was suggested, we discussed it and we figured we'd bring it forward and see how you felt about it. If it's not the way to go, then I think that they're prepared to, you know, continue as they did last year, but this was another option.
I'm wondering, I'm wondering if, if it was done like last year with signs put up, no parking available and local traffic only, if that might ease some people's...
I think for, to a certain extent, it will, it will leave some, but I think some of the challenges we deal with in this event, or any event like this on a regular basis, are the people that feel the need to make the loop all day long. And that just adds to that traffic. So you have people that all they want to do is drive by and look. And they drive by a lot, over and over and over again, and that causes some issues because now we have, not only do we have the traffic from the event that's causing the problem, we have the local traffic that's trying to get home or trying to leave home, but now we have this other element of people who aren't really interested in going to the event, but they want to drive by, see what's going on. And that causes, that adds to that as well.
Ms. Jackson.
I have a couple of questions. Well, actually, I have three and answered one. Why not have a show service and just shut it down to the sense of leaving it open and, you know, allowing the traffic normal flow? Or is this where it says expo and stage? Are there two areas of entertainment? Is that what the problem is?
That's all.
So there are two areas of entertainment. We do the headliners and bands up in the city park. And we also have what we call local stage set up in the parking lot outside of the stock exchange. And that was to give, the feedback through the committee was that more local bands wanted this opportunity to perform. And we were trying to find a way to give them more exposure and more opportunity in such a bigger crowd. And so the way that we decided to do that was have the local stage down in the gulch and it worked really well. The feedback last year was amazing. The bands were happy that they got this other opportunity so that more bands could come and perform. So yes, there is a second stage down in there. And the reason that we were able to do that is because historically, we used that whole area, that whole parking lot for vendors and we just minimized the space that we had for vendors by adding a stage in that same parking area.
So is that what the expo stands for, the vendors?
The vendors. The expo is the vendors, yes.
So then you're bringing in food trucks and other vendors, which again, now is taken away from the businesses that are already selling like the quarry and these type places. So by blocking off that traffic, it's even now causing a more hardship to those areas also. Is there no way you can continue the loop even having your entertainment in the middle? Meaning, can't the road still go with your expo and stage or no?
So I just wanted to add, one of my officers pointed out, we happened to be working up there last year, the other major concern that they had was the pedestrian safety as well. People that are out there walking around, cars not paying attention, well, it becomes a dangerous situation as well. So I wanted to add that. Again, we shut down part of the gulch every year for the Fourth of July for events. We can make that, we can make that work. This was a different idea and it's just, again, one of those things that I think they're still prepared to move forward with on the old way, but in changing some of this a little bit, trying to limit some of that traffic. The challenge was going to be that putting the sign up there, some of the biggest issues won't be limited by the sign because they're just, they're the ones that want to just continue to make that loop. And that, that does become a challenge. So again, it's your discretion, it's your, it's your direction, you know, if we need to go back to the original traffic plan, I think the foundation is willing to do that. If we need to go back to the original traffic plan, I think the foundation is willing to do that, ready to. If we move forward with the one that's here, that's, that's going to... Correct?
Yes, that is correct. We, like I said, we originally came to the table proposing the same plan as we used last year with a little bit of diversion, hopefully by putting up a locals only sign. Would that work? I don't know. One of the problems that we, or one of the issues we faced last year was that all traffic was coming in and again, I think that was a lot of people wanting to look and see what was going on. And then they would try and turn and then leave an exit without going all the way up to Taylor and leaving the correct way. And so again, pedestrians, the safety of everybody. We want everybody to be safe and we want to do this the best way we can for the city and for the people that come in attendance. And so we're willing to do whatever your recommendation, whatever your direction is in this case. We just wanted you to know that we've looked at each and every way possible that we think might work, that we think might help improve it and ultimately, your decision will direct us to do what we need to do.
Thank you. I will admit that maybe I'm incorrect, but I have some reservations about turning loose a bunch of people knocked away with Bisbee onto OK Street. I'm worried that our officers are gonna be busier trying to unfix the problems that OK Street presents right now without turning a bunch of people that have never driven on it and think it's one way as an example and so forth. So do we have a motion, Mr. Jacobson?
I, I think this actually could use a little more discussion. If this was delayed, say until the next council meeting, that'd create a hardship for you.
You'd have to travel again from Tucson.
The drive is lovely anyway. No, no hardship for me. I, you know, that's why we approach this early on so that we can work through any of these little road bumps that come up and this is certainly one of them. If you think of further discussion will help get us to something that works good.
You know, I, you know, I'm very supportive of the, you know, Blues Fest. And I'm glad that you're having it and that you're putting it on and it's, you know, great and and, you know, I'd like to help you, you know, in any way that we can. But I just have reservations about using OK and Taylor, you know, for two-way traffic. And then I don't know, you know, I really don't know. Would people from out of town have any reason to actually use OK Street and come up in the Gulch? I mean, they're going to the Blues Fest, that's downtown. You know, one of my, one of my concerns is, you know, there's a business up there. So, you know, effectively, you'll be closing their business down for a day. You know, that's more or less. The locals, you know, they might, you know, pull up, see that they can't get up the Gulch and turn around and go home. I mean, they'll, of course, they'll be open, they're open every day, but, you know, I'm concerned about their business and I'm concerned about congestion on both of those streets. Although I do agree that closing it down for safety is a good idea and it makes it more festive, you know, where people can get out in the street a little bit, they feel free. You know, there's some advantages to closing down the street, you know, for you, you know, and, you know, for the town itself. And, you know, we can, you know, give local musicians, you're planning on hiring local musicians to play on the Gulch itself.
Yes.
So it would give them work too. This is tough.
Let me ask Mr. Jacobson, are you also then opposed to doing it the way they did it last year?
No, not at all.
Well, then that was a good motion to make, that we don't have to take it.
Oh, well, is that acceptable to you?
Just to clarify, with or without the new sign saying locals only?
Well, I don't, you know, the signs, locals only, I, you know, I, you know, I don't know what that means exactly in this town. You don't want the signage, is what you're saying? Or you do want the signage? You do want the signage. You want the signage that says locals only.
Yes, we do want the signage.
You do want the signage that says locals only, alright.
And so Blake Foundation is working, is gonna be working with Arizona Bearcaves?
Yes, the Safe Bear Cave Company.
I believe it's Arizona Bearcaves. To provide the traffic patrol signage, the road closed signs and they will provide her with a traffic patrol plan. So that's one thing that they can ask of them is to provide that locals only sign at the bottom going up as well as to make sure that we have proper signage all the way around Taylor Avenue so that those visitors who are unfamiliar with the area know how to get back to Main Street if they so desire. So nobody gets lost in there. They'll have good signage to get back to the main road.
Then let me see if I can make a motion behind all that. I moved that we approve the park facility and right away for the use of City Park and Brewery Gulch for the Blues Fest. You know, I actually, with the understanding that we have, that, you know, that we just discussed, where there'll be signage and you'll be doing it in a manner that we did it last year. I guess that's part of the motion.
It is.
Yeah, okay. It'll be held on Saturday, September nineteenth, twenty twenty, from seven to ten, to include seven brake cars.
I'll second. Allohs in favor signify by stating aye. Aye, oppose, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Item number three.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I think you pulled item number C because there was a typographical error and you're gonna renotice it for next month or next year, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Do we have to do a roll call to vote on that?
Yes. Thank you. Thanks for keeping me honest.
Mayor Protem Pollock?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacominno?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Hansen?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, we all voted the same way, it's unanimous. Thank you, thank you. Item number three. Discussion of possible approval of enterprise fleet management agreements for equity and walkway leases for a portion of the city vehicles. Chief Chauvin?
Evening, Mayor Council, members of the public. That's alright. So we have on Enterprise, Mr. Julian Sosa has come down and he's got a presentation for us. We've been talking with them on our vehicle fleet. As most of you know, we went to Coches County some time ago, I think eight months ago now, give or take, asking for help because of our own antiquated, our fleet was in pretty poor condition at that point in time. And the county was gracious enough to help us out. They really, they really did us a solid, for lack of better words. They provided us with some Tahos and even to the city public works, some trucks. They charged a per mile rate. I believe the police department at the time was paying forty-three cents a mile. A portion of that went to fuel and went to maintenance. They were giving us vehicles with a hundred eighty thousand miles on after they were finished with them. Rather than sell them at auction themselves, they were giving them to us at a per mile rate. Knowing that half of that forty-three cents was going towards the depreciation of that vehicle and the other half was going to cover mileage. Since we started this program, the county split an engine in one of those Tahos. I believe they put a transmission in one of those Tahos and they've done several very, very costly repairs. They're dying and again, we're grateful for that. But now that this is changing, they will no longer provide us to those on that same program. So they're expecting us to purchase these vehicles. The vehicles that we're currently have, they're allowing, at least from the police department anyway, they're allowing us to continue to drive those vehicles and pay at a per mile rate of forty-five cents a mile until we pay the value of that vehicle, which even at that is a very, very good rate. But again, we're still paying three to five thousand dollars, I think is a safe estimate for vehicles with a hundred and eighty plus thousand miles on them. They're far better shape and condition than the vehicles we have, but they still have a hundred eighty thousand miles. And while this has been a good Band-Aid, they've helped us a long way. As we are now taking on the responsibility of fueling those vehicles and providing maintenance and repairs, they're gonna get even more expensive. And so we reached out to Enterprise and opened a conversation with them to talk about a vehicle program as a whole for the city of Bisbee. The city of Bisbee has, in my career anyway, we purchased a vehicle brand new and we have literally driven it until it was no longer worth anything. Enterprise. And when I say that, the police department would traditionally would buy police cars, new police cars. We would use them and then when we were finished with them, we would pass them down to the fire department and then they would use them. And then the fire department would pass them down to Public Works. And in some of those cases, the vehicles that were in services, police vehicles, when I started here in nineteen ninety-eight, are still being driven by Public Works today. Do they get from point A to point B? Yes, they do. Are they really safe? Are they, are they something that we should be doing? How much money are we spending to keep those vehicles on the road? That's where Enterprise comes in and they have a plan put together and Julian's gonna show us the presentation. And the hope is, at the end of this, to understand that by utilizing a vehicle replacement plan for Public Works, for the police department, for the fire department, for whoever chooses to take this on out of their budget. By going to this plan, we will have the expertise of Enterprise keeping an eye on our vehicles for us in the tune of how much money are we putting to maintenance? How much fuel mileage are these cars getting? And what is the value of that car? Because there's a certain point in time where it makes economic sense to say, we're gonna go ahead and sell that car at auction now and we're gonna replace it with a new one rather than continue to drive the car to the Blues Fest, eventually building up some equity and having a vehicle replacement program and actually buying vehicles to replace the ones that we've modeled out like the county does, like some of these other agencies do, rather than purchasing vehicles with a hundred eighty thousand miles. So with that in mind, unless there's any questions, I will turn it over to Mr. Sosa.
Is there anything left to say, Mr. Sosa?
Albert's gonna come work for us after this. Very well said, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you guys for having me, first and foremost. Excited to be here. My name's Julian Sosa. I grew up here in Southern Arizona, Tucson actually, so, you know, my family lives there. So it's important for me to try to meet a lot of different cities and counties that are struggling with these things. I've been with Enterprise for a little over eight years and so I've seen all different types of fleets. But my goal today will be to kind of just give a quick overview of who we are, who we work with, what we're trying to accomplish and then be kind of the subject matter expert to hopefully answer all of your questions so that we can look at the idea of creating a plan, like Albert said, for the city of Bisbee. So.
Is it working? Orange is not working now.
Okay, yeah. Alright, so I'll try to move this pretty quickly, but feel free to stop me. This is just a brief history of Enterprise, who we are. So Enterprise Fleet Management is a sister company to the company Enterprise Rent a Car, who I'm sure you're all familiar with. We're a third generation family owned company. A lot of people don't know that our founder, Jack Taylor, started the company out, created the name off of the USS Enterprise, which he was a Navy fighter pilot and flew off of that. So to this day, our new CEO is his granddaughter, Chrissy Taylor, and so she runs the show. One family essentially owns about two million vehicles, but we try to operate more of like a family and company versus corporation. So this kind of just speaks on our footprint here in the state of Arizona and the impact that we have to create sustainability and also give back to the community. This kind of outlines all the different programs that we have here and as well across the country and some of the contributions we make here for the state of Arizona. This is the current fleet situation, kind of the overview of the city of Bisbee fleet. So on average, the current age of the vehicle is about sixteen years old. Based on the data we collected, two thousand and three was the average model year and projected fuel economy is about ten miles per gallon. So the average odometer reading is well over a hundred thousand miles and you're currently in a position where you're forced to purchase from the county, as Chief alluded to. So this is the typical situation that we find a lot of our municipalities that are in just because after the recession, you're forced to hang on to vehicles a lot longer than you typically would. So we try to create a plan to help you move out of that program into a more sustainable solution long term. So the overall objective is to, like I said, create a more efficient life cycle so that you aren't forced to run vehicles into the ground. Right now, the current life cycle is obviously over two hundred thousand miles basically until the vehicle dies and then you have to make the decision of whether you wanna put an engine or transmission in. Our proposal will be moving towards closer to a five-year rotation for the administrative fleet and significantly reducing the rotation for the police fleet as well based on kind of the market trends and things as we move towards that five to ten-year mark. We expect an eighty percent reduction in the maintenance costs and the majority of the vehicles will stay under factory warranty. We'll continue to reduce the overall fuel spend, especially with potentially moving to a hybrid solution for a portion of the fleet, which is good timing as a brand-new vehicles for the model year twenty twenty. So kind of cutting edge there. And then we'll talk about using the closed and open-ended leases, both as recommendations from Enterprise that would best match what the city of Bisbee needs. This kind of just quickly speaks to the idea of the optimal time to replace vehicles. So it's a, there's three different components. So the first would be the depreciation or the cost of the vehicle and then as over time, it will start to decline. We try to reach a point where you can hopefully sell that vehicle at the right time to where you can recapture a ton of that equity, specifically with the pickup trucks. You guys get a great buy by being a government entity. So what we're finding is they're almost worth just as much as what you pay for them a year into the vehicle for certain vehicle types that we're recommending. So you can have a very, very low cost to running vehicles due to your low mileage pattern and we'll facilitate that entire process by buying the vehicles and selling them. Obviously, the maintenance and fuel costs rise over time as well. So we try to find that sweet spot of when you can avoid having those high-dollar expenses. Right now, you're kind of operating in that window there where you don't have as much depreciation, but it's costing you a small fortune to just keep them on the road, fuel and maintenance. So we're just trying to offset that and achieve the lowest cent per mile to where you can have the ability to run newer vehicles without it costing you more money. This is some of the analysis that me and my team put together, just kind of comparing your current situation with getting vehicles from the county at a hundred eighty thousand miles on average and then running them up to two hundred thousand miles. It's a little bit hard to read, I'm sorry, but our goal is to simply It's a little bit hard to read, I'm sorry, but our goal is to simply compare apples to apples and show from a cent-per-mile standpoint what it would cost to essentially switch to brand-new vehicles. We were able to get credit approved for the City of Bisbee to do this with a zero-down payment, so minimal impact on the budget, and that will allow you to choose a more sustainable vehicle program that we can kind of start fresh, and you won't be at the mercy of relying on the county as your only source for vehicles. What we found was the patrol fusion was a significant winner. What we feel is it would be a best fit operational based on what Chrissa, the chief, had said for the needs. We looked at several different vehicle types, but what we found is with the fuel economy savings, it ends up being a significant winner. A lot of different municipalities across the country are using the hybrids simply because the engine doesn't have to run while you idle, so it will still operate all of the lights and the electric equipment, computers, while you're on patrol, but you're not consuming gas. So that's a great fit, and Ford, I believe, is putting, I think, eleven billion dollars into their electric vehicle program over the next couple of years, because that's just kind of where it's going. So it's a big push for the industry, so you guys will be forefront of that. On the other side of it, for the administrative white fleet, we're recommending three-quarters-ton crew cab trucks simply because they are a very cost-effective solution for what you're needing for pickup trucks. They hold their value extremely well. So with your government buy, you buy it very low, and then we're able to get rid of them at twelve months and sell them, like I said, for very close to what you purchased them for. So it ends up being a really good deal for the city for the cent-per-mile. Ends up being pretty close to exactly a wash from what you're currently doing, but you get brand-new vehicles instead of having, I think, sixty-three percent of the vehicles don't have analog brakes, eighty-eight percent do not have electronic stability control. So this is just kind of speaking a few different client testimonials we have. So gave these to Chrissa and Albert to kind of have other clients that we work with here in Arizona speak on our behalf. We have about nine thousand partnerships across the country, about three hundred here in Arizona, and of those, about almost a thousand are government clients now. There's another case study that is obviously hard to read, but we can provide those. And then after that is just some local references of other clients that we work with on a similar program to reduce their costs and replenish the fleet.
Questions, counsel?
I think, not for you, Mr. Sosa, for the city manager. You know, we've talked off and on, you know, over the years about vehicle replacement and things like that. Why are we doing this now before budget? We've got budget right around the corner, and I think something like this should come up at that point in time where we can really discuss it and not make a decision in five minutes on a PowerPoint presentation.
There is money in the budget to order some vehicles before the end of this budget year, so it's an opportunity to start working these vehicles into your fleet now. We are now purchasing vehicles outright from the county. We no longer have the opportunity to utilize them at the per-mileage rate. So this would be a way to start to integrate our own fleet with the opportunities to purchase from the county.
There's money in the budget. Bottom line is, what you're indicating is there is money in the budget, and whether we spend it on what we're doing now or we switch and go to a method such as this, it's still using that same money. It's not adding money to the budget. And then as the budget year comes up, we'd be discussing adding money to the budget.
You know, we hear all the time, there's no money in the budget, and then when something's really wanted, well, there's money in the budget.
Well, no, Ms. Klein, we are paying monthly, you've got the statements, we're paying monthly for vehicles.
Oh, I know, I never thought the vehicle agreement with the county was a good idea. I always thought it was a bad idea.
Okay, well, so majority of the vehicles, so there is a, what's the lead time for the bill, Tuss?
So it's going to be about four months on the pickup trucks, maybe a little bit longer for the pickup.
So if we were, and I'm not saying we're going to do this, but if we entered into this agreement today, we're still four months away from getting this done. This is the first month that we'll have the total bill. The county has no longer supported us for fuel costs or for maintenance costs to our vehicles. This has been an ongoing conversation with Enterprise, trying to put some numbers together and see where we're going to come up. And as we look at the numbers and the amount that we're spending for the hundred and eighty thousand vehicles, hundred and eighty thousand mile vehicles that we're getting from the county now versus the vehicles we could be driving, it's just a night-and-day difference. And the cost overall, I think, is the savings is going to be greater going with Enterprise than it would be staying with the plan we're on now. And we have to, there has to be something else come up. Because even like, again, the vehicles we have are, there's some that are pushing two hundred thousand miles now since we've had them. Our vehicle usage, you know, we have a small town, but it's stretched out at a great distance, and these guys are making these responses, and we need to make sure that we're putting them in a safer, reliable vehicle to make those responses in. And our old fleet's definitely not it, but we're also getting upon the time where we have to have two people graduate the county, still trying to find a third. And right now, I'm going to have to put them in expeditions because we don't have any more towels, or I got to go back to the county and ask them to buy two more towels. We're at a point where we're just forced to make that decision now. We can't push it up, we can't keep pushing it down the road. I do have the money in the budget to cover the remainder of this year, and I think with what I had last year, I think that we can continue on for future payments as well. Look at what I spent for maintenance and for fuel usage this year. With hybrids, I think the savings is going to be significant.
So it is a twenty-nine-hundred-dollar-a-year annual savings, so it's actually less than what's currently budgeted.
The only question I had, I, it'll be, I'm going to do business for twenty years, and there is a excess mileage charge. What's the mileage situation on these vehicles?
So there's two different forms of leases for the patrol vehicles. There's no mileage penalties or anything like that, so they're called equity leases. So it's essentially just a finance.
Got it.
For the city vehicles, there is an option for a mileage restriction on those.
I saw ten thousand miles here, as you figured that you were accusing.
That's kind of the average of what all the vehicles were going. So there is, if you go over that in a twelve months, there is a cent per mile tariff, so that can be adjusted, but it's a pretty low rate that we felt like was spot-on to what you guys were tracking.
Okay, then answer, counsel, thanks.
So the patrol cars obviously are going to go to police officers. The two lease trucks, actually, three lease trucks that we presented or come forward with, one was to go to Public Works for administration and the other two to the police department for administration. So they would not be driving call-to-call-to-call like our police officers are required to, it's more to the station, the city hall, and back again. So the knowledge on those are going to be significantly less compared to the others. I just wanted to tap that as well.
And the bottom line is that it actually projects a savings per vehicle of a couple thousand dollars a year.
Exactly.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Chief, how many miles do you put on a patrol car per year now?
I apologize, I don't have that number.
Based on the data that we collected earlier, it was, I think, a six-month snapshot. The administrative and the police vehicles were both doing almost exactly ten thousand, both on both sides.
Okay. And second question, how many vehicles are we talking about here? I'm a little confused about the number.
So what I'm asking for is five, the hybrid patrol cars for the police department and two of the leased trucks for the police department, a third truck leased for Public Works.
Eight vehicles?
Eight vehicles.
Okay. Then you have the money in your budget for that for the rest of this fiscal year?
For my seven, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I move to approve the Enterprise Fleet Management agreements for equity and walkway lease for a portion of the City of Bisbee vehicles.
A second.
Ms. Turner?
Mayor Potem Pollock?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacominio?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Nay.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes six to one.
Thank you, sir.
Aye.
Aye, oh. That's right, Leslie's having a. Thank you, sir. Item five, discussion of possible approval of the recommendation for the Bisbee Arts Commission to fund a grant application for Abigail Stage in the amount of three hundred dollars from the Bisbee Arts Commission Fund.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, excuse me, could you state the reason you pulled item number four?
Yes, item number four was pulled because new documentation, additional documentation came in today that has to be reviewed by the, thank you, sir.
And there are other times to agenda, is that it's a new contract they submitted relative to the old, other than the old contract that was approved.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. James? Yeah, this is three hundred dollars for a group of artists. Abigail Stage is putting this together. It's going to be a two-week exhibit, and it's going to feature artists that you may not have heard of as much or not maybe as prominent in the community, and it's a chance to showcase them. And it's going to be a central school, it's going to last two weeks, and they're going to have an opening up, and at the end of it, the end of the exhibit coincides with International Women's Day, and they're going to have an event to commemorate International Women's Day and the closing of this event at the same time. And once again, I'd like to remind you that the Bisbee Arts Commission raises its own funds. So having said that, I move to approve the funding of the grant application for Abigail Stage in the amount of three hundred dollars from the Bisbee Arts Commission Fund.
Those in favor, signify by stating aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. I'm sorry, negative. Nay? No nays? All right. At six, discussion of possible approval to establish an animal ordinance ad hoc committee. Pursuant to our special meeting last week, I've requested the council to allow me to appoint and to establish an ad hoc committee regarding the animal ordinance. I have requested people to turn in applications for committee applications, and as I understand it, some have come in. And we will be asking the city manager, city attorney, and I'll be asking Ms. Giacominio to act as liaison to the council. And I'll be asking several people, depending on those applications coming in, I believe we have two from the animal shelter, and then that'll leave us space for a couple from the, quote, "citizens-at-large." So anybody interested in here or out there, you can go online, pick it up, or you can call in, or come in and pick one up, or call in and want to be sent to them.
I have a question.
Ms. Klein?
You did get the, let that header go ahead. You got the email I sent you about the state statute information?
Yes.
Secondly, what's the timeframe for the applicants to be put in?
I want to appoint them next meeting.
And how many total are you?
A total of five, five from your.
Total of the whole, not including me, so a total of five?
Yeah, and not including the city manager or city attorney. I want five citizens if you go.
Right. Is that going to include the people from the shelter and the two that you had suggested last meeting, Kathy Saven and Kelly?
I believe that they've put in their application, so.
What I mean is that, is that five, including them, or is that them plus five?
That includes them.
So there's just three more people?
I move to establish an animal ordinance ad hoc committee.
Second.
Thank you. Those in favor, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. I believe we give answers. Item seven, discussion of possible approval to waive the requirement to connect the property located at 106 Mojave Drive to the City of Bisbee Public Sanitation Sewer System. Mr. Harrow, welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We did receive a request to waive that requirement at the property at 106 Mojave Drive to our sewer system. I provided a favor there. You can see that they're over eight hundred feet away from the sewer system, near the nearest main. Requiring them to tie into our sewer main would actually require them to extend the sewer main, and we wouldn't be able to put in any sewer service there. So in my opinion, I think it's unreasonable to require them to tie into our sewer system.
Questions, counsel? Oh, what are they using now? Second, okay.
I just have a question on why these are coming up.
Previously, what was being done is they were just getting an email or a letter from the building official, and in our code it says that the Public Works Director and the mayor can approve that, saying that the mayor is going to be signing the letter that is appropriate to bring before council.
I move to waive the requirement to connect the property located at 106 Mojave Drive to the City of Bisbee Public Sanitary Sewer System.
A second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Those in favor, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We stand, and that was, item eight, discussion of possible approval to publish a request for proposal to demolish and dispose of the remaining old city hall building. Mr. Harrow?
Well, we need to do something with the building that's, what's left of it there. And right now, it's currently fenced off. We did have a previous proposal, but that's long since expired. So the only thing we're asking for is the approval to publish for a request for proposal.
Right. Questions?
Yeah, go ahead. I've got quite a few people from my warren, quite a few people that are from this town, requesting to have it delayed, to have further research into maybe garnering some kind of grants or such. It is the, not only maybe the oldest, but the second-oldest building in warren. Demolishing it is going to take away a part of Bisbee's history and leaving a big vacant lot. I had a friend send me some pictures from California where they just did a church that had burned down, similar to, you know, they dumped a bunch of more money and they expanded it, but it showed the kind of bracing he was talking about, they built like an inner shell. People have made suggestions that maybe money could be put forth through grant funding because it's a historical building, and shoring up the walls and then utilizing it as an open farmer's market or another usable space if we don't use it for city hall. But demolishing it is not a real popular choice for many people in this town, including myself.
Those are all options to look at. In doing the request for proposal for demolition, I believe is part of that process so that we know how much it's going to cost. Not, definitely not asking for approval to demolish it right now. Does it cost us anything to find out how much it would cost?
Begging no disrespect or anyone else's hate disrespect. If we do go through with this, I would like it in writing that this is strictly a request for cost.
I will educate Ms. Giacamino that within a week of the fire, Shippel was down here, we discussed at length opportunities, financial opportunities for that building, and there weren't any, and aren't any.
Well, I just find it interesting that you look all over the United States and there's places that so many things have happened, and they're rebuilding and they're restructuring their burnt out buildings, some of them even more gutted yet, we're the only ones.
Yes, ma'am, and those are not poured concrete structures, there's a big difference, concrete does not do well in, in a thermal environment.
I'm sympathetic to the people who contacted me and said that they'd like to preserve this historic structure, the hard truth of the matter is, we're broke, we don't have the money, and we've had two years to get money, and the best we could do was come up with insurance funds, I have no objection to rebuilding City Hall, but it needs to be done within budget, if there was a foundation in this city, a benevolent foundation that could put money forward to rebuild that historic structure, I'd be the first one to vote for it, there isn't, and it's not going to happen, so I think the, the best course of action right now is to proceed forward and find out how much it's going to cost to tear down that dangerous structure, because we don't have the money to secure it, and we're not going to find the money to secure it.
Ms. Hanson?
Thank you. I, I agree with Ms. Giacamino in the fact that people that have contacted me are very upset about it being demolished, and I understand where you're coming from, but I would like to see even a proposal delayed until we do, do another RFP, is that right now? RFP, RFP, for City Hall on that, on that spot, I know that there's, you know, people that want it someplace else, but this is what had been decided on, and if parts of that building, because I know Al Popper had said was going to use the portico, or, or parts of it, or, or whatever, but I would like to have some, have whoever is going to do a, excuse me, I'm having a problem with my throat, whoever is, that comes forward with an RFP that we accept, what their intention is, and not destroy or demolish it before that, it's, I know it's a very emotional, I don't have a problem with getting the prices, but I don't want to see any action taken before we get all that information.
Absolutely, if we, if we didn't move forward with publishing a request for proposal, I couldn't do anything with it, and it's because it's going to cost more than what our procurement requires anyway, so I would definitely have to come back before, so who would have a price?
It'll be over five grand.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Ms. Klein?
I have to agree with Ms. Hanson, I, I don't want to see us take any action on this right now, I mean, our last meeting was for a rebuild, and the architect backed out, and so this meeting, the next meeting, it's, well, let's see what we can do to tear it down, or let's go out for proposals, I, I'm, I'm just, just very troubled by that, why, you know, one week it's this, and the next it's, it's something else, and, you know, we waited this long, and, and I, you know, I know we need to do something with it, but hopefully now we have a city manager that will go out and start looking at other things, our last city manager didn't do anything on it, so perhaps we could look for historical grants, or, you know, something like it that will help us get to where we need, you know, where we need to be, I just, I don't know, I just find it troubling that, you know, one week we're ready to, to start this project, and the next we're looking to tear it down, I'm just opposed to that.
Can I just address, can I just address that?
Yes, ma'am.
So, so in the proposal that you received to the RFP, there was a price quoted for demolition of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and that has been called into question, is that really what it would cost, this will just clarify for us when we do get proposals, either to save it, use portions of it, take away portions of it, it will just clarify for us what that cost actually is, because that cost will be subtracted from the two million dollars that we have available, so this will just help inform us going forward, it's just an RFP, it's not a decision to demolish anything, it will inform us moving forward.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'll point out that this was done once before in July, and there were five quotes, and none were accepted, it didn't go anywhere, because the process was still evolving, as you just said, we'd like to see it evolve again, so we're just, we're just spinning our wheels and going back to, to that point in time.
Great.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The engineering report says that, you know, it's compromised, and I think the last, who did I talk to, they said the portal itself can't be saved, that the whole thing needs to come down, you know, I know it's nostalgia and a lot of other things, it's unfortunate that, that there was a fire there, but I, I feel like we have been spinning our wheels, and it's time to move forward on this, and all, and like I say, this is a request for proposal, that doesn't mean we're doing anything but asking people how much is it going to cost to tear it down.
So I, I move to approve to publish a request for proposal to demolish and dispose of the remaining old City Hall building. Second. Ms. Cornell?
Mayor Protem Pollock.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino.
Nay.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Nay.
Councilmember Klein.
Nay.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion.
Does? Does.
Does. Nine, discussion of possible approval to publish a request for proposal to provide an oil distribution truck.
So, oil distribution truck is a truck that will help allow us to fog seal and seal coat the roads that we have repaved, helps us to keep those in condition, out during any fog sealing or seal coating, the road becomes dry, brittle, and cracks, cracks a lot sooner than it should, so again, this is just a request for proposal, we have done some research on some vehicles, and so we have an idea of what it's going to cost, and we would like to get a, a formal proposal for those.
How, how come we don't have a fiscal impact on this?
Because it's only a request for proposal, we're not, we're not buying anything yet, once we get the proposal, then I'll come back.
Yeah, but you said not to exceed ten thousand dollars, I would like to know where that's going to come from.
What do I say that, I'm sorry?
Right, you said on the very bottom there.
If it does say that, it may have come from a previous, previous cancellation form.
Black noise estimated to exceed ten thousand dollars.
Oh, okay, so that's our procurement, that's our procurement's limit, we know that it's going to cost more than ten thousand dollars, so we have to go, that's part of our code, if we know it's going to cost more than ten thousand dollars, so anything that costs more than ten thousand dollars, we have to get sealed bids to purchase, so that's, that's why it says that.
Well, but we can, but where is it going to come from, where's the, where's the money going to come from?
Well, when we get proposals, we, we know how much it's going to cost, and I can look at my budget, and I can tell you what I'm, what I'm looking at is from the one percent sales tax, so that we can provide our, our maintenance to those roads.
Okay.
I can tell you that some of the vehicles that we were looking at are between forty-five and fifty thousand dollars.
Now, hypothetically speaking, if you get this, what is the cost savings utilizing this versus what we're not, what was used?
So, previously, we had a, a few roads that we had some proposals to do the fog sealing on, the cost on those was sixty thousand dollars, and so we would be spending about that much money to buy our own vehicle so that we can do the maintenance ourselves, rather than having to go out and pay sixty thousand dollars every time we go and get a contractor to do that.
No, I, I agree that it's a, it's a good idea for us to have our own, because we do some, so much, especially with the roads being paved, I'm just concerned about the one percent, it seems like we're taking a lot of things out of that, but we're not paving any roads.
Well, okay, so let me explain maybe the, the not paving roads portion right now, in order for us to, we, we just did pave a majority, if not all, of the terraces area in Warren.
Yes, yes, you did, and I appreciate that.
You're welcome, the reason we aren't paving roads right now is because it's too cold, in order for us to pave, the weather has to be fifty-five degrees and rising, and so it drops well below that, and so we can't pave right now, so we do have a, a number of roads listed on, even come from, came from the original road assessment, that we do plan on paving as soon as we can, I'm hoping we can get started again late April, and so we do have a section, a, a large, most of it, I would say more than half of the one percent sales tax that was budgeted for this fiscal year, we still have that available to continue paving, so we would take, you know, we, we do have a list, we would be able to do that, and buy a fog sealing vehicle or oil distribution vehicle.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Question, is this like a barber green, is, is this what we're talking about, this equipment?
A what, I'm sorry?
Like a barber green for paving?
I'm not sure what that is, but this, this will look like, it'll look like a, like a fuel truck, essentially, but on the back it's got sprayers.
Like a water, like a water fish.
Okay, okay.
Yes, and then it's, it'll spray down either a fog seal or a steel coat.
And you're sure we'll have?
Yes.
Money in?
Well, I, I'm fairly confident, you know, once we get the proposals back, then I can be sure, but I'm fairly confident that we do have the, we will be able to go back and pave a lot more roads that will continue with our list and purchase, but.
Again, this is an RFP, this is your request to the council to spend on that.
Correct, we're just asking so that we can find out exactly how much oil we would cost.
And rough estimate?
I said, we were looking at some, we were looking about fifty thousand.
Any other questions?
I just want to say, I, I really think it is a good idea, because we have to do our, if we can do our own sealant or oil, what do you call it?
Fog seal or?
Fog seal, I mean, that does save us a lot of money.
Do we have a motion? I move to approve the publishing of a request for proposal to provide an oil distribution truck.
Second.
All those in favor signify by stating aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Item ten, discussion of possible direction and repair and operation of street lighting for SR eighty for old Bisbee Lowell around the Freeport-Mackemorean Upton Pit, Mr. Harrow.
So I did receive a phone call from APS, and they let us know that there are three lights that, in the, the streetlights that illuminate the State Route eighty that needed to be replaced, and because those are on State Route, they'll also require an ADOT permit, and with their traffic control plan, the traffic control for each, for each ten day about is twelve hundred dollars, and so he gave me three proposals, one proposal would be to repair or replace the lights that need to be replaced now, second proposal was to replace all of the lights, light bulbs only, leaving the existing arms, and then the third proposal was to replace arms that are fairly old, and if you've ever driven by there, look at them, some of them are not the Cobra Head arms, those are just a single arm that come out, some of them look like they're old decorative arms that are, they're, they're put together, so the question then came to me is, and, and this fellow Coleman is, why are we paying for to light up State Route eighty, and we also have a dark sky ordinance, do we want to continue to, to light up State Route eighty, those lights are only around the pit area, so as you drive south from Old Bisbee to the traffic circle, there's still a large section before you get to the pit area that's not lit up, it's, it's fairly dark, there are some traffic lights, or some streetlights at the intersection there between Knockover Road and the interchange where you go underneath the bridge, there are some lighting there, typically that's what ADOT will, will do when they have streetlights, they only light up the interchanges, especially for, for little highways, I did speak with Freeport and talked to them a little bit about what we were thinking that was going to come to council and ask for direction, and asked them if they may be willing to maybe put up some pedestrian or pedestal lights, lower lights, I have them in my neighborhood, they're solar, and they point down, so I did, I did start that conversation, but today, I would just like to have that discussion and maybe get some direction on how you all like us to proceed.
Ms. Hanson?
Why are we responsible for lighting up the highway, I mean, that's not our, our roadway?
That's exactly my question.
Yeah, we don't have enough history between the two.
My guess is that somebody wanted to put them up around the, but somebody just said in the past that they wanted it.
Could it be because of the path?
Footpath?
Sidewalk.
There is a small sidewalk right there that goes next to the fence, I want to say that's like four feet wide, I mean.
Maybe two.
Yeah, it is, it's a fairly narrow thing, but again, there are street, there are.
I was just saying, maybe that's why.
Maybe, but there aren't any streetlights closer to Old Bisbee, and there aren't any close, streetlights as you get to Lowell as soon as you pass where the, the pit is, there aren't any there, in those areas.
Yeah, no doubt a, a deal between the city and PD fifty-plus years ago. Further discussion?
Uh, you know, I'm thinking that, yeah, why do we light up several streets, well, people could pull over looking to a dark pit, I mean, you know, one time that Bisbee Blue Building was actually being used, you know, I guess it burnt out the other day.
I, I did hear that.
Yesterday.
It was a fire, but I, I, I don't really, personally, I don't feel it's even necessary to light that area up, but, you know, it's up to the council.
You had a comment?
Mr. Mayor, I'll try to do better, I think it's a safety issue though, but I mean, that big hole there, and if you don't know about it, and so a lot of people that, you know, that are new or whatever, that can, come in there, because it gets very dark.
It's what they have in fence.
Yeah, so you hit the fence and you go in.
Well, it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter then, does it?
But you have headlights on your car.
Exactly.
Yeah. Headlights on your car should tell you not to drive into a hole in the ground, you don't need a whole red light.
So I just wanted.
It was not a stupid question.
I didn't say that.
I, I would share that there was a car accident involving one of those poles, they're not the breakaway poles, that would ideally be in that location, so that's another consideration, and I think your training is a consideration.
I was, I was just going to suggest, perhaps it's appropriate for you to direct us to figure out the legal history and make a determination as to who is the actual legal responsibility for lighting there, because I do know that in many cases, we have dark skies, that the state has come in on State Highway and lit it anyway, despite their dark sky ordinance, big issue that happened in Sedona, for example, so there are alternative things, and I, I don't know why APS would believe that the city is responsible for lighting that area, which is largely unlit now, more than eighty percent of it is currently unlit, so I don't know why city resources would chase after that, and the city manager brought to my attention a very good observation, that if, if in fact it doesn't need to be lit, then APS could de-energize those lines, and the city would not require alignment to go in and do the repair and removal, the city could do it itself, so lots of, lots of options and considerations, and we should probably direct that we go in and do some research and come back to you with informed information on who, what, where, and why, if at all.
Right. Unless, unless there's a direction to spend the fifteen thousand dollars to repair this.
So can, are we in agreement, we can provide direction to staff to, to a historical check and bring it, and bring the information back, thank you.
Unless it's already been said, forgive me if it has, and along that lines also. Unless it's already been said, forgive me if it has, and along that lines also the legal gram, the legal responsibility, if any, that it's, if it's dark, it's dark. If we leave it dark, are we liable, what I'm trying to say, does that make sense?
Agreed, understood.
As opposed to not having breakaway poles.
Oh, we do into the pit.
Okay, uh, item eleven, possible motion, approval of a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussion and consultation with the city attorney to provide legal guidance with respect to the nuisance or, uh, ordinance.
I move to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussion and consultation with the city attorney to provide legal guidance with respect to the nuisance ordinance per ARS thirty-eight four thirty-one point oh three A three.
Second. Uh, those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay.
Nay.
We, we are, uh, five to one and, uh, we are in executive session. The motion we have to decide those in favor are out of executive session, signify by stating, uh, aye. Oppose, nay. We are out of executive session. City managers report? Ms. Call, sorry.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Um, well, I did have a formal introduction Japais with the USDA, um, and the programs that they offer. Um, if we had several really good discussions, um, in relation to projects that have come to my attention, including the bike ways, um, work by step up Bisbee Naco, and, um, also some potential for, um, uh, work in the opportunity zone. So, um, so those were all really good discussions that I was able to have with him. Um, and we'll move forward. I already have a meeting scheduled both for Bisbee Bike Ways and with the step up Bisbee Naco folks to look at housing recovery. Ashley and I have scheduled, uh, we have a fee schedule retreat next Monday because that's the only way we're gonna get it and I'm ready to bring that to you. Um, so that won't be on your February fourth agenda, but the following agenda for you. Um, I had a trip, um, to Shippensburg at the end of next week. I'll have an opportunity to scan a complete copy of the last Warren, uh, submission to, uh, National Historic Trust and, um, then we can start from there if that's how the council would like to proceed, but at least we'll have a full copy in our possession. And then, um, I already mentioned that follow-up meetings on housing initiatives on to include, uh, Compass Affordable Housing. We'll be making a visit in February to look at the site behind Safeway as a possible project. We're probably three years out from, uh, completion of a project because we are gonna miss the April submission cycle in twenty twenty. So, um, we'll just be preparing to submit that for next, for twenty twenty-one.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, you may.
And, um, I will just add in terms of city manager report, you will be receiving an evaluation metric from me to complete because the manager's evaluation is due. She has a right to do it in executive session or public session. She'll be properly noticed by Ashley and will follow that. You'll complete those, return them to me, and I will aggregate the data for you.
Thank you. Uh, council comments are my own and because of the hour, I'm going to ask that it be transferred to the agenda. And with that, Mr. Higgins?
I move to adjourn, second.
All those in favor of adjournment signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. We stand adjourned.